Good evening, and welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Lebanon Plan Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting and officially call the meeting to order. At this time, if I could ask Ms. Cook to read the roll.
Matt Reynolds.
Here.
Ashley Paddock.
Here.
John Lastly.
Here.
Kevin Krulik.
Here.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Brian Tandy. Absent Jane Taylor.
Here.
Lori Gross.
Here.
And Gordon Perry, absent.
Let the record show that Mr. Perry and Mr. Tandy are absent, but we do have a quorum to conduct business. At this point, first item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes from the last meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, moving to old business. I have no old business to bring before the Plan Commission, anything other commission members would like to bring forward. Ben, anything from staff? At this point, moving on to new business, I would make one request. The third item on the docket, docket number 19-10, is a relatively straightforward request. I would ask if the Commission is okay that we move that to the top. We've got a lot of people here, I know, to talk about the Sunbrook Villas project, and I would hate to wait, make the Turpens wait through that conversation. So if that's okay with the Board, I'd like to take that one first. Okay. At this point, turn it over to our planner, Ben Bontrager, to take us through docket number 19-10.
All right, good evening, Commission members. We'll walk through this one real quick. This is docket number 1910. It is a rezone request for a property currently zoned multifamily. The property does contain a single-family home, so they're making a request to rezone this property from multifamily to single-family residential SF3. And my understanding of the background here is the property has historically partially been used for a gift shop that received approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. That use is no longer active. Mr. Turpin, who lives there now, is attempting to sell the property. He has a buyer. The buyer went to get a mortgage, and the bank said it's not zoned property, properly for a single-family residential use. We can't loan money for a property that's non-conforming. Thus, the reason why it's coming forward tonight for a rezone request to a single-family residential zoning classification, which would allow him to sell the property and that buyer to get that mortgage. So you can see here, this is on North Lebanon Street. It's on the west side of the road here, directly across from the dentist office. It's kind of hard to tell by the colors here, but everything along the corridor is zoned multifamily, except for the dentist's office, and everything behind it is zoned SF3. Everything, other than the dentist's office around it, is all residential in nature. You'll find that in the staff report, that it kind of outlines that. You do have some that's, the dentist's office is own neighborhood business, so that's the only thing that's not a residential zoning classification. The history of the zoning, as I understand it, before we did our zoning map and ordinance update in 2007, we had a zoning classification that was Zone C, which actually permitted all residential from single-family to multifamily. So it was an all-encompassing zoning classification. Many of these corridors were a Zone Class C, so a single-family home would have been permitted, along with duplexes, quads, multifamily. When we redid the zoning in 2007, they changed the zoning classifications, and my understanding was that they were going to do a zoning classification that was similar, but it was decided they didn't want to do that. So kind of as a default, they made it multifamily, even though it created a lot of non-conforming uses in a lot of these areas. So that's kind of the situation we're in now, is because of the, when we did the land use map change about 10 years ago, it created non-conforming uses, because we went to a more traditional zoning classification, where you have single-family residential zones of different densities, and then you have a multifamily zoning classification. That's all that's permitted there. So it has created this situation here. So walking through the five criteria for the rezone, the first is consistency with the conference of plan. Future land use map is the guide from the conference plan that we use for that, and this property is designated for residential uses on the future land use maps, so what they're requesting is consistent with that plan. Criteria two, compatibility with adjacent uses. I've walked through that already. Other than the dental office across the street, which is more of a neighborhood business-type use, everything else is zoned residentially. Directly to the west and behind this property is all zoned similar. The zoning classification of what's being requested, the SF3, so it is compatible. Desirability of land use, I'm sure there's a number of people might say, have different opinions, but in my opinion on this corridor, that this, a single-family use is a desirable land use on this corridor. Many of these are single-family homes, so what, so the rezone that's being requested is a desirable land use on the corridor. Criteria four is impact on property values. I would find that there would be no impact on property values to allow in this rezone. It actually won't change the land use that's there now, it's just changing the zoning to match the land use. Finally, criteria number five, responsible growth. Again, this is an existing land use, they're not proposing to make any changes physically to the property, so we find that this would represent responsible growth and development, because it's already served by utilities, et cetera. So what would be before you tonight, this, as a rezone, this is a process that where the Plan Commission is the first step, and then the rezone is actually adopted by ordinance via the Common Council. So what will be before you tonight, in the Plan Commission consideration, would be a recommendation. So staff has indicated that we would recommend this petition be forwarded by the Plan Commission to the Common Council with a favorable recommendation. Be happy answering questions if there are any.
Ben, what kind of effect or impact could this have on the remaining houses along the corridor that are multifamily? Are we, could we be setting a incorrect precedent, or?
I think it's actually the correct precedent.
Okay.
I would actually prefer, in many of these cases, that we look for a different zoning classification for the entire corridor, because I think single-family uses in most places are more desirable, more desirable land use than the multifamily classification.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? All right, is the applicant here that would like to address the Plan Commission? Okay, well, just let the record show, we gave the applicant an opportunity to speak. They have declined. At this point, we will open up the hearing for docket number, the public hearing, excuse me, for docket number 19-10. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this issue before the Commission? Not seeing anybody moving forward. I will close the public hearing and entertain any further questions, discussion, or motions on the matter.
A motion that we send, docket 1910, a rezoning request, single-family residential SF3, with a favorable recommendation to the Common Council.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Kelly, will you take the roll?
Matt Reynolds.
Yes.
Ashley Paddock.
Yes.
John Lastly.
Yes.
Kevin Krulik.
Yes.
Keith Campbell.
Yes.
Jane Taylor.
Yes.
Lori Gross.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you for your time and your application. At this point, we'll move back to the top of the new business docket, docket number 19-2. This is Sunbrook Villas, requesting PUD, Planned Unit Development rezoning, for a proposed residential subdivision. Sunbrook Villas is located on 32.61 acres, north of County Road 250 North, and east of Witt Road and County Road 275 North. I realize there's a lot of people in the audience that would like to speak on this. We will have our staff present the report, allow the applicant to address the Commission at that time, before we would open this up to a public hearing. I would ask that everyone sign in, if you are planning to speak. We will give everyone a chance to speak, and we will try to limit those comments to no more than three minutes per person, and just ask that everyone be kind and courteous to the Commission and those also in the room. Try to keep your comments, to, try not to repeat comments that maybe one of your other neighbors might have also stated. So at that point... Yes, and also please state your name and address for the record when you come up to address the Commission. At this point, docket number 192. Ben, you want to get us started?
Sure thing, let me get the information up here on the computer. All right, so before you tonight is a two-step process here, and I think we've done a couple of these already, just in the last 12 months. This is a PUD rezone, that is one step, and the other one is a PUD preliminary plan. The PUD rezone is a process that allows applicants to essentially write the standards for their development, that's appropriate for their development. That rezone, like the rezone we just did, will go to the Common Council for adoption. So that rezone, there's an ordinance that's included with the information you got that spells out all of their standards, all of their architectural standards, all their landscape standards, that they'll be adhering to in this development. So those are all, those are all unique to this development, per se, and allows them to, to kind of, with some flexibility and design, to do the type of product that they're proposing here. That PUD rezone, like I said, will go to the Council next week, if and/or when it makes it through the Plan Commission with a recommendation. The Council then will hear that as an ordinance that would then be adopted, again, if that process goes that way. The preliminary plan is a Plan Commission action, so we can hear these concurrently at the same meeting. If you, for example, gave the PUD rezone a favorable recommendation, you could also approve the preliminary plan, subject to adoption of the ordinance by Council. Obviously, if you give it a negative recommendation, you're probably not also going to approve the preliminary plan. That would be the other option, but yeah, if you are able to forward that to the Common Council with a positive recommendation and approve the preliminary plan. You can also recommend changes, if there's other things you'd like to see, or things that may be a response to some of the comments from those from the public. We can make any changes as necessary in this meeting. You can make those recommended changes, and then forward that to the Council that way, too. So just to get started a little bit, this property is in the northwest part of town, it's about 32 acres. As you can see here, this is just north of the intersection of Witt Road and 250, which is this intersection here. The road, as it comes north, comes north, and then curves to the west, right here, it's 275. What they're proposing here, and I'll go through some of the details, I'll just give you just a real brief overview of what they're proposing, and I'll let them to go into more detail, the actual product and how this will develop. This is a single-family product, single-family detached product. It is an age-targeted neighborhood. Or, as we've started calling in the office, a lifestyle-targeted neighborhood, because this is a single-family home, but is a no-maintenance neighborhood. So there will be a homeowners' association that's in charge of maintaining both the common areas, but then also the actual individual lots of each home. So the folks living in this neighborhood will pay a monthly or annual fee, and they'll have all of their landscaping and yard maintained for them. So, as you can imagine, this is targeted towards empty nesters, or those that are no longer interested in taking care of a yard, or as we talk about in the office, it may also be younger people that never have any interest in taking care of a yard, they might live in a neighborhood like this, too. So typically, when you see that type of neighborhood, they usually are smaller lots, because it becomes more efficient from a maintenance perspective, and then they provide common areas that are available to the neighborhood. So just to walk through some of the specifics here, in terms of the development standards, as I suggested, they are, they are asking for smaller lot sizes, for the efficiency of the neighborhood. They're looking for 5,000 square foot minimum, so the smallest you'll see in this neighborhood is 5,000 square feet at a 50-foot lot width, seven and a half foot, or five-foot sideyards minimum. And they are, their villas, I guess it's more of a villa-style home that's being proposed, so a little bit smaller ranch-style only homes that are being proposed at this time. They start at just a little, just a little bit under 1,200 square feet for those homes. Again, they're looking for folks that are retired, empty nesters, don't need as much space. Most of them are two or three bedrooms, so not quite as large as somebody looking to add to their family. This is for folks whose kids are now gone out of the home. In terms of the architectural standards, actually, let me, let me kind of go walk through the neighborhood a little bit here. As you can see, there are several elements to it. Because of Witt Road, our thoroughfare plan recommends that Witt Road extend and continue north, all the way up to 300. So a major component that you see here, would, they would be setting aside the right-of-way for Witt Road Extended, and then building essentially a County Road cross-section, I think it's 24 feet wide, with shoulders. So they will be extending it to their north property line, and stubbing it up to the north property line, and leaving the right-of-way for it to be improved at some point in the future, if and/or when the traffic gets to the point where it needs to be a larger cross-section. But for right now, they're basically extending the cross-section you see on existing Witt Road to the north. They will also be providing the proposed right-of-way necessary on 250 for widening at some point in the future, and then also 275. Another major component of this that we were concerned about was, was, you know, obviously there's going to be some increased traffic out here, we want to make sure that people just, you can't exceed speed limits quite as easily on Witt Road. So we are proposing that this can, and actually, I'll pull up another sheet here, so you can see the configuration a little bit better. Rather than this maintaining the curve, you'll actually see here that we asked them to create a four-way intersection, that would be a stop, a stop intersection. So rather than having that, that curve in the road now, you'll see the existing 25 kind of makes a curve to the east here, into a new four-way stop intersection, so that there won't be any through traffic that's not stopping here. And then you'll see, then there's an entrance to the neighborhood here, and then a second series of entrances further north into the neighborhood, and then they also have a fourth entrance to the south off of 250. And those are the, those are the four entrances. In terms of detention, the detention is going to be provided along 275. They understand that there's, if, in the areas where there are existing homes, they wanted to provide as much of the buffer as possible, so that you see that they have a fairly large, almost four-acre common area with a large pond that's along 275 to provide that buffer. They do also have, I'll pull up here a second, the landscape plan, or at least the conceptual landscape plan, that kind of gives you a better idea of how they're going to landscape that area as well. There'll be a series of trees, both deciduous and evergreen, that would be lining both 275 and Witt Road Extended around the pond. And then in terms of landscaping on the east side, this, because these are the backs of the homes, this, there is going to be about a three-foot mound plus, plus trees planted along, along that corridor as well. On the architectural side, we'll pull that up now. As I said, these are single-family villas, and what you see here represents every elevation that's being proposed in the neighborhood. As I mentioned, their, their ranch plans, they all have masonry included on the front elevation. They all do also all include two styles of vinyl siding. You see here, you've got kind of like this shaker style, I believe, or shingle style, and then also some lapped siding. So you'll see every one of these includes all of those elements, including some additional architectural elements on some of the gables as well. And these represent, at this time, all of the elevations that are being proposed. If any new were being, were to be added at any time in the future, these elevations are included as an exhibit to the PUD ordinance, so anything new that we propose would have to match the character of the existing homes, and that's at the discretion of the Planning Office to determine whether they meet that character. But they do have to meet some basic requirements that we included in the PUD ordinance, which would be the masonry, the two styles of vinyl, and all of these are proposed with kind of these decorative windows in the garage doors, so we included that. They do all include overhangs on the side gable ends. See if I can find. I think, I think the examples in here actually don't have side gable overhangs on it, but on the gable ends, you see on the sides, those will all include a minimum eight-inch overhang. On a corner lot, they're required to have at least one window on the street side, to add to, you know, break up the side that you typically see on the street. See if there's any other architectural elements that I'm missing here. The other thing that typically comes up in a lot of neighborhoods are fences. So in this one, fences are not permitted at all within the front prop, front yard of the property. So whether it's a home like this, or on a corner lot, the front yards of properties will not permit any fences, which is more restrictive than our ordinance right now, the city's ordinance. And the backyards are restricted to only four feet tall, so they can't have the tall privacy fences in the backyard. They're restricted in size in the rear, side and rear yards. So that's something that's a little bit more restrictive in this neighborhood. In terms of the lot landscaping, they will have street trees, which, basically, on average, are one tree per every lot between the sidewalk and the street. On the corner lot, they'll have one in the front and one in the side. On the individual lots themselves, they would have one tree in the front yard, eight shrubs in the foundation bed in the front. For a corner lot, there's an additional one tree and eight shrubs in the side yard, again, to provide some, some additional elements on those side yards facing the street. So they will have, you're going to see on it, for example, like on a, on a typical single-frontage home, you'll see two trees in the front, along with eight shrubs along the, the foundation of the house. On a corner lot, you'll see four trees and 16 shrubs on that lot. On the perimeter landscaping, kind of showed that a little bit already, make sure I, you got all the details there. You see the, the mounding and landscaping that you'll see here along Witt Road Extended. Let me pull up the other, the one to the south. And you'll see here, that same mounding and landscaping extends south and around the corner onto 250 as well. So anywhere where there were backyards that were backing up to the road, they provided the mound and landscaping in a common area, again, so it's maintained in common, as opposed to the individual homeowners. And they do include mounds and landscaping to make sure those backyards are appropriately screened from the street. In terms of open space, what I would call programmed open space, if you will, that's usable by the residents. Pull this first one back up. They did provide an area that's probably the most accessible to every lot in the neighborhood, the far northeast here. Let me zoom in, so you can see it a little bit better. And again, these are conceptual at this time, so this might change a little bit, but this represents the concept for what this would look like. You can see here, they're planning on, on some sort of, whoops. I think I just broke it. There we go. A formal, some sort of formal garden that'll have a variety of sitting areas. Again, we're talking about age-targeted, so it doesn't make sense for this to have a playground in it necessarily, providing some sort of formal garden and sitting areas, so neighbors can, can congregate in this area, meet, talk, sit and, sit and relax. But this provides a concept of what that area might look like, and available to all the neighbors in the neighborhood. In terms of other, other details to mention, interior street standards, they have narrowed the, the interior streets slightly from our standard, and in doing so, we've indicated to them that there would, that we'd only allow parking on one side of the street, rather than on both sides. So our standard right now is 34 feet back a curb to back a curb, but we do allow parking on both sides of the street. These streets will be 30 feet back a curb to back a curb, so a reduction of four feet, but they're going to be parking on one side. Your typical parking area is about eight feet wide, so we're actually kind of gaining some street in this case, because we won't allow parking on one side. In terms of pedestrian network, we see all of the interior streets will have the five-foot required sidewalk for our ordinance, and then along Witt Road, what we're having them do is on the west side of the road, it'll be that same five-foot sidewalk. On the east side of the road, it would be our typical 10-foot asphalt path. You'll see, and we've had them put it to the back of the right-of-way, so if at some point we do need to widen the road, then we won't be impacting those, those sidewalks where they are. So the sidewalks and paths will be quite a bit off the road at the current time, as you see here, the path represented on, on the very back of the right-of-way. But it is in the public right of make sure that we're able to maintain those. I think that covers most of the off-site road improvements. I've already mentioned some of the road improvements that you saw there. And they will be dedicating all necessary right-of-way in all these roads, so according to, I'd say, according to the thoroughfare we have looked at, this Witt Road Extended, right now, our thoroughfare plan would suggest it needs to be 120-foot right-of-way, and when we're looking at it with, with Kev, the city engineer, we would be able to do a four-lane boulevard road with the necessities of our pedestrian infrastructure within 100 feet. We couldn't imagine, we can't even imagine at this point when we would ever need a four-lane boulevard road, but maybe 30 years from now we do. But within 100 feet, you can accommodate all of that. So the 120 feet was, was, was more than, more than enough, so, so we decided, we'd let them do 100 feet, so they will dedicate all the necessary right-of-way for that Witt Road Extended, as well as everything on 250 and 275, to make sure if at some point we do need to make improvements to those roads, we've got all the necessary right-of-way, at least on this side, to be able to make those improvements. So they will be dedicating those as part of the plats when they come through. I think that's all that I have, just a kind of a quick overview of the development. This will be done in phases, it'll probably be three or four phases, depending on how it comes together. So this isn't one of those situations where you're going to see a bunch of homes all done at once, they're going to happen over a period of a number of years, depending on market demand, just like any other single-family neighborhood. Probably a four-to-five-year time horizon, hopefully sooner if the demand's there for them, I'm sure. So, so that's, that's the plan for now. They're planning on starting to move dirt out here before the end of the year. The first homes won't be available to start construction until sometime in 2020, once all the, all the underground stuff is done, and all the roads are in for the first phase. Some terms of the PUD rezone and ordinance, we have recommended that the Plan Commission forward the rezone and ordinance to the Common Council with a favorable recommendation. And in terms of the preliminary plan, we do recommend approval of the preliminary plan, contingent on the following conditions. One is Technical Advisory Committee. We have looked at this once, the TAC committee will probably need to look at it one more time, because it has changed, this is the first time they looked at it. We want to make sure the applicant adequately addresses any remaining comments of the TAC committee prior to deploying any sort of permits or improvement location. Stormwater approval, man. We'd make sure that they receive formal drainage approval prior to submission of a platter, improvement location permit. And there's one, and it may already be, may already have been changed, but there's a cross-section on the plans, where it indicated four-foot sidewalks on the street cross-sections, which is to make sure that those get adjusted to the required five feet. I believe the plans were actually drawn with a five-foot sidewalk, but then the street cross-section was just, I think it's got, it's mislabeled that they're four, four-foot sidewalks. And then the final thing would be that the, in terms of the preliminary plan, is that we want to make sure that this is contingent upon the rezone and ordinance being adopted by the Common Council. If for some reason the Council makes changes to that PUD rezone that would impact the preliminary plan, then that, that would need to return back here for approval by the Plan Commission. With that, I'd be happy to start answering any questions you have, and if you have any for me first, before the applicant speaks.
Thank you, Ben. Any, any questions for Ben at this point?
My first question for you, Ben, is...
Yes, sir.
We may have discussed this before. If we approve the PUD for this development, and let's say something happens to the developer and it, the deal falls through and they're unable to proceed, would the next developer have to present for a new PUD, or would these same standards continue to that next developer?
The same standards would, would apply to the next developer, it wouldn't necessarily have to return, but in any future developer or builder, it would have to meet all of the same standards and requirements that were approved this first time through.
Anybody else? At this time, would the applicant like to address the Plan Commission?
Thanks, Kevin. Hi, members of the Commission. My name's Adam Mears, I'm with Gradison Land Development, I'm here with Mark Gradison. This is a culmination of about eight months of work for us to get here, give you a little bit of a picture of kind of how we do things, and how, how we've gone about our business here with Lebanon. This is the Whitehead Farm. We've worked with the Whiteheads for some time, talking about this piece of ground. And again, about eight months ago, got in under contract with them and started our process, which a lot of times, and in this case, started with a hand sketch of, of what we'd like the neighborhood to look like, from lots, and, and that's generally the first step for us. We came in and met with... We came in and met with Ben and Kevin and discussed the plan, had the discussion about the 120 foot extension of Whit Road, which makes this a unique piece and not the easiest to develop, not the most cost effective to develop when you have a 120 foot, or in this case, 100 foot, you know, right of way going directly through the middle of the subdivision. So that hand sketch, again, started with a meeting, and what you're seeing in front of you, or what you did see in front of you with the plan that Ben was showing you, is probably the third or fourth, maybe fifth go from meeting after meeting after meeting. I mean, we've spent a lot of time with the city trying to incorporate, again, the needs of the thoroughfare plan, needs for right of way, discussing the right of way. One of our first plans had a couple entrances off of 275, or rather, didn't have an entrance off of 275, and that became important. So a lot of work and a lot of planning goes into these plans, not just with us, but with your city staff, and we've worked with them for a long time now and really appreciate all their work and appreciate staff's recommendation for favorable recommendation to the council. As Ben mentioned, this is age targeted, more of a lifestyle product. Empty nester generally is the way it's marketed. The homes will average around $250,000. And again, as we've seen, you know, traffic studies, discussing traffic, we did, we have at least a letter regarding traffic in this area, but one thing we found with an empty nester product from a traffic standpoint is you tend to not get people leaving at those high peak times in an empty nester community. Generally dealing with people that are maybe retired and again, aren't hustling to get out at the early times and certainly aren't wanting to come back during those rush hour times. So it's not a typical traffic pattern that you would see in a, for example, first time home buyer or next step up home buyer. Again, it's really targeted with the maintenance free product to be generally an empty nester product. As Ben described, with the open space, and I can tell you, again, working with the city, you know, however many calls we have with Ben, our original plan had 113 lots. With working through the needs and requests and working with Ben and Kevin, we're down to 110. Ben was, as many times as I called him and said, really, two lots for open space, can we do one lot? Can we do one lot? We've got the two lots here. So we've really worked hard to try to incorporate what planning's vision was, what engineering needed from, again, the right of way and the thoroughfare plan going through the piece. And we think what we've got here is a really nice looking developed subdivision that we think will be very successful. Clearly, hearing all the growth in Lebanon, there's definitely a need for housing, and we think this will be a great, great addition to Lebanon. So again, on behalf of the developer, we're here to answer any questions anybody has. It is maintenance free, as Ben discussed, so from not just plowing driveways in the winter and maintaining, you know, maintaining that for the homeowners during the spring, summer, fall, there's mowing and mulching, shrub trimming, fertilizing, so really making sure that the yards are taken care of in a very professional manner. I don't know particularly which, we have a few neighborhoods that have this type of empty nester or maintenance free product, and it looks great, and the neighbors are really happy with not having to mow their yard, and I'd like to not mow my yard either. So I know how that feels. So again, we're very excited about it. We've really enjoyed working with the city and, again, myself and Mark Gradison are here to answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Planning commission, any questions for the applicant at this point?
The only question I have is on your retention pond.
Yes, sir.
How do you intend to keep that thing clean?
Well, Mark can talk a little more about it, but we do use a company that maintains and monitors our ponds. Mark could probably talk a little more technical about what they do.
Yes. Good evening, Mark Gradison, Gradison Land Development. We do typically hire one of two different pond maintenance companies to help us from the day to day, week to week maintenance, spraying for algae and such. If we have blooms that happen or any special things that are going on, then they typically get hired out to do the special work, but there is an ongoing maintenance schedule. We also will have a pretty large fountain with this pond because it is a large pond, so it'll require a little bit bigger fountain to help aerate and move water as well. So that will, that will do a lot of the work for us, and then there'll be, you know, chemical treatment as needed beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant?
Hey, either of you. The targeted or average price range of the 250 that kind of does, will there also be a, are you anticipating a monthly homeowner's fee associated to that? Because we're looking at, what, 1,100, 1,500 square feet, 1,700 square feet? So the price per square foot is a little high.
Price per square foot is a little high, but in a smaller home, it generally is versus a larger home. You're always, your square footage per square foot price will go up as the smaller, as the home becomes smaller. The other thing is that they do put a lot of amenities in these homes as standard, and so it's not like they're going to start at 175 and average 250, and everybody's going to add $50,000 or $75,000 extra, as this is going to be, it's pretty much all in there, and they'll have a few options they can add, but not as many as the typical builder might offer. So it's all pretty much, the low and the high is, you know, certainly going to average out. You have different square footages, no doubt about that, but if someone bought the 1,700 square foot version, his versus his neighbors isn't going to have a lot of difference, which is good for appraised values and all those type of things. That's good there. As far as homeowner association dues go, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,700 a year will be the dues, maybe 2,000. We'll try and keep that down as best we can. We haven't gone all the way through that budget estimating yet, but it'll be somewhere in that neighborhood. And that will include, you know, as all the things that Adam mentioned with plowing snow, taking care of all the grounds. We will not be taking care of building maintenance because these are, for the most part, pretty much maintenance free on the outside.
Let me say one more thing. Once we start selling homes also, we hire a professional management company to manage all of our neighborhoods. We've got, right now, currently between here and Ohio, call 20 some neighborhoods in various stages. We've got property managers at every, you know, for every neighborhood, but it's a professional company that we hire that manages our subdivision, so they take care of, you know, driving through it, you know, once a week, dealing with architectural review, forms, taking care of our budgets. They receive all the funds in. You know, one of the things we do annually, if not sometimes more than once a year, we get with our management company and look at the budgets. You know, we'd like to build in enough reserve, but there's a lot of times we'll go through a year and if it's, you know, 1,800, or, excuse me, $180 or $200 a month, and we're six, eight, nine months in, and we see, hey, we think it could be 150 a month, you know, we're not, you know, it's a nonprofit homeowner's association, so it's certainly not a profit center for anybody other than the homeowners, whatever's, you know, reserved and left over. So we don't manage those ourselves. We're very involved in, you know, every single request for an architectural thing goes through Mark or I, or generally both of us talk about it. But Mark, you know, Mark's been in this business for 30 plus years and is very good at staying on top of every neighborhood. So we do a real good job of doing that. And again, the management company, the ones we work with around here in central Indiana, do a great job for us. So we're happy with them.
Thanks, Adam. And then both you and Mark alluded to other developments in other communities. Are they similar, age targeted, lifestyle products, or is this kind of new to you?
Well, we've got one product we have in Cincinnati, west side of Cincinnati, in a town called Harrison, we've got a product where it's literally across the street, single family. The other side is empty nester, incredibly successful. We've got one we're doing down on the south side of Indianapolis. It's this same product, but actually duplexes, they're two houses together. But Ryan Holmes, who's the builder, this is a big push for them, both the entry level product and then this empty nester, they're saying this is a big market for them. So it's been successful for us, certainly in Cincinnati and where we're doing it here as well.
We do have, we do have a couple other maintenance free communities that we do with other builders as well.
Okay.
A little bit higher price point than what this is, but we actually, our home building business started with the empty nester product 35 years ago. So we're well versed on how to help those folks manage their community and get through that.
Thank you.
So when you guys are done and you're out, how does the HOA set up? Is that set up through an individual that actually lives in the neighborhood, or is that still, is this going to be an HOA company that manages it? What?
So here's what we do. When we get to, let's say, 50% of the neighborhood is sold out, you know, generally, you're looking at the homeowner's association board being generally us in the initial phase. As we get some home sales and traction, we generally bring on one neighbor, almost as a learning curve to get somebody from the neighborhood interested and involved in making decisions and being a part of the board, the neighborhood board life. If you haven't been a part of it, it's a thankless job, but getting somebody involved. Then, once we get to a turnover rate generally of about 85% of the neighborhood sold, we then step out as the managers, turn it over to that board. And again, by that point, we would have had several homeowners join us on the board so that when we exit out as the developer, being the ones making, you know, having all the voting power, for example, of the HOA, it turns over to the homeowners. And at that point, the, at a turnover meeting, for example, our management company's there. Everybody's been paying the management company for the last five years, you know, it's not an expensive amount, it may be $400 a month for the whole subdivision. The value's there, it's one of those things that, at least I'm not familiar, in our developments, having a neighborhood say, no, we'll take care of all of our accounting by ourselves, and we're going to take over sending notices ourself and do it. It's set up to where really they roll right into keeping the same management company in place just because, you know, nobody's going to start, you know, everybody's working their own jobs. Now, they're not going to start opening a QuickBooks account, managing, you know, 100 and, there's no way to mandate, I mean, you know, once you turn it over, they've got their HOA bylaws, and if the entire subdivision decided to manage it themselves, they're certainly more than welcome to do that by law. But again, I don't, I've yet to see it happen. I've yet to see a neighborhood that's been managed for, again, such a small amount for the whole development to say, hey, we want to take this burden on ourself to save $400 a month. So we expect anybody to stay, but I, you know, again, once it, once the neighborhood, it's their neighborhood, it's not, you know, once they buy-
And unfortunately, at that part, it's, there's not a whole lot anybody can do once it goes to an HOA.
Yeah. And again, we're very involved with them. We do, I think, a very good job of getting homeowners involved early on, from at least a board perspective, being involved in the board, so that when we exit out, I mean, we don't, it's not like, you know, we've had exit meetings where, it's not like we just walk in and say, have fun, guys, take care. I mean, there's a full turnover meeting, the, our HOA management company's very involved in that turnover, there's an election of the new board members. I mean, it's a very formal and well-run transition when we do it.
I've been involved in two, and both of them have failed, and I'm just not a real big, I guess, supporter of an HOA.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, I know, I think it was last time we were through, I think Mr. Campbell and I discussed that as well, I know he's got concerns about HOAs as well. If somebody can find another solution, you know, this is the, this is the way it is, it's got to be the homeowners making those decisions. Again, we do our best to really set the neighborhood up financially to be successful, you know, with both reserves and having a dues level that is able, you know, people are able to make the dues, it's covering all the costs, and there's a little bit of reserves in there in case, again, this is going to be an expensive fountain. If 10 years from now the fountain goes away, you know, it's our job here initially to help build those reserves so that, but in the end, it's the neighbors' money, and if, you know, what they choose to do with it, you know, 15 years from now, you know, they're going to be bound by the HOA docs. And we, again, we work with, and will work with Ben on those covenants and restrictions and share those with him as we've done in the past. So, you know, we're pretty diligent about those documents and making sure that, you know, that they're solid and they're going to have to abide by them.
How do we enforce those, Ben, now?
Well, they can be enforced by the homeowners.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to find out from Ben, how do we actually-
Hopefully this cough will go away now. We don't necessarily have enforcement powers on covenants and restrictions, it's, you know, private enforcement. So where we have ordinances, similar type ordinances that would address certain things like, you know, parking a large commercial vehicle in the street or long grass, et cetera, we can address those things because they're also in the city code. But the actual private covenants and restrictions, other than making sure that everybody's aware of them, because we'll have a copy in our office, we can't necessarily enforce those private covenants and restrictions.
Just something I would add to, you know, as someone who's in a prior, prior position, had quite a bit of experience managing a large owners' association, I think the one thing, one perspective you have to understand with a neighborhood like this, with a maintenance free neighborhood, you know, this is a little different than, say, some of the smaller subdivisions that we might have seen built around Lebanon where, once the neighborhood is built out, the homeowners' association just sort of fizzles and dies because there's, be honest, there's not a lot of work to do, you know? If you think about it, in a neighborhood like that, someone's mowing the banks of the pond because their house backs up to it, and maybe the only other thing that they have to worry about is an entry sign. And, you know, and be honest, you could see those entry signs just left to neglect, and they'll stand for a long time before there's really a problem, but sometimes there's not a lot of day to day work that needs to be done. But with a neighborhood like this, you know, and when we, they talk about management companies, that's not a landscaping company, or at least typically not. It's, these are firms that do nothing but manage owners' associations. They manage the accounting, they manage putting out notices, they manage collecting dues, they manage violations, they manage legal proceedings that might be associated with the lack of paying dues. And then they also do hold landscape contracts with landscape firms that do the maintenance. So, but I guess what I would just offer to you is that this is a whole different level of scale than some of the other neighborhoods we might have around town. When you're talking about 100% of the exterior maintenance, the landscape maintenance, if you will, is covered by the owners' association. I mean, that would be an extremely bold and irresponsible move for a board to try to disband their management responsibilities or even leave their management company. They may switch management companies because they're, that is a competitive business, but to completely disband that, I think, is highly unlikely because of the level of detail that is, that is required on this type of, this type of a neighborhood with this much, this much maintenance involved. So, just my two cents.
Do you have one, Kevin, that you can compare theirs to that we have here in town by chance?
I believe the Stable Run-
Stable Walk?
Or Stable Walk, excuse me. Stable Walk, those are duplexes, and I would say that is comparable, because I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe the owners do their own exterior landscape maintenance. That's all provided by a management company who then contracts with a landscaper. The other thing too, that quite often you see in these types of covenants and restrictions is mandating that they use a professional management company. Now, you might say, well, they can change their covenants and restrictions, and yes, you can, but typically a standard of, standard requirement to change your covenants and restrictions requires a two thirds vote of all members, not just the board. So to get, you know, 70 residents to say, yeah, we don't need to renew our maintenance or management contracts, we'll do it ourselves- we don't need to renew our maintenance or management contracts, we'll do it ourselves, again, you have some more protection because of the scale involved with a neighborhood like this. Stable Walk, though, is the only one I can think of. I don't know, Ben, if you recall any?
I think they're only required, or the only thing they do is the mowing and the snow. Everything else is, to my knowledge, the responsibility of the...
Yeah, and I can just tell you from experience, the success is really on the front end, and I think, again, for us, getting a professional management company involved from day one. You know, if you wake up every day and there's a cup of coffee next to you, and you wake up one day and it's not there, you're going to, why isn't it there? People just get used to, they've got a management company, and somebody's sending out notices, and somebody's sending out bills, and the idea that you're going to have, again, as Kevin said, seventy-some-odd people say, we don't, let's do it ourselves. Again, at a, you know, four hundred dollar a month bill for a professional management company, again, I've just never, I've just never seen it to where people, again, they're so used to it for the four years we're involved in the development, that they don't know any other way than at least a professional management company taking care of it. And I think anybody who's lived in a neighborhood that doesn't have a professional management company and moved to a place that does, for the small amount of money, it's incredibly worth it, and just haven't found anybody really bailing from that. You know, trying to take that task on would cost way more than four hundred dollars a month.
And that's four hundred for the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, that's four dollars a month.
True.
Yeah.
Kevin, I'm sorry to interrupt. Some of our online viewers and home watchers are having trouble hearing you. Do you have a microphone?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Just being told that I couldn't hear you very well.
Thank you.
And I did have a question, and it may be more for Ben and Kevin, and actually the plan commission. We talked about traffic, probably in the fall of last year, at Plan Commission, where we approved the development that'd be south of this, it was south of two fifty and east of Witt. And I'm sure traffic is probably on the minds of a lot of these people in the crowd. I appreciate the four-way stop, I think that is huge for that area. But adding these additional one hundred and ten homes, and I know peak times are going to be different for this age-targeted group, but what kind of traffic have we looked at any further for two fifty and for Witt Road? Or, because I know when we, I think, was it eighty-some homes that we approved in the other development that was south of two fifty?
I believe it was closer to two hundred homes.
Oh, two hundred, I'm sorry.
Two hundred homes.
So, oh, eighty was Riley Ridge, I'm sorry.
Riley Ridge.
Yeah. I mean, we do require them to hire an independent third-party consultant to provide us with some traffic impact analysis associated with the neighborhood. You know, I think, you have to understand, so an average, an average home is going to generate about ten trips a day. You know, think about your life, you know, going to work in the morning, coming home, husband-wife possibly both working outside the home, taking kids to school, sports in the afternoon, grocery shopping. And that, actually, that number probably feels about right to you, that you leave the house ten times a day, and that's how we generate traffic. That's what we refer to as trip generation, from an engineering standpoint. You know, so three hundred homes, give or take, that we're talking about, might generate three thousand trips a day, when that's completely built out. You know, that sounds like a lot, but these county road cross-sections that are effectively two eleven or twelve-foot lanes, they can carry probably up to fifteen thousand cars a day before you'd really see any major impact and loss of level of service associated with that piece of infrastructure. So, you know, I know these size of neighborhoods are maybe a little larger than what we're accustomed to, but these are not major traffic generators from a traffic engineering standpoint as we look at them. I'm not saying there won't be impacts, absolutely, there are impacts, you will feel the increased traffic on these roads. But will it increase to the level that the road no longer functions? And keep in mind, I'm talking about traffic function. Yes, I understand there are issues with the current levels of the pavements out there, some of the areas of pavement are in failure, and we're taking steps moving forward to address those issues. I'm, we're talking about just from a traffic generation standpoint. We are planning to pave Witt Road this year, that is a project that's out for bid as we speak. There are also plans to look at two fifty north next year. So, and keep in mind, these, both the Sunbrook Project and the Sunbrook Villas Project now before you, those are both projects that are going to build out in four to five years. So we've got some time before we will realize the full impact of traffic, and we have time to rebuild those roads, to make sure they're up to snuff, so to speak, for the loading that you'll see.
Just to add some specifics, the applicant did have a traffic engineer do the trip calculations that Kevin just talked about, specific to this neighborhood, looked at AM and PM peak hours, which is a three-hour window, and then based on the trip generation numbers plus the existing traffic that's on, you know, two fifty and Witt Road already, they did provide some specific recommendations for improvements along the main roads. So looking at Witt Road, or I guess it would be Witt and two fifty, that four-way intersection, we talked about the modifications there, they did recommend that each direction coming to that intersection have an exclusive left turn lane, and then a shared through and right turn lane. So rather than just have a standard two lanes that come in each direction, they will have a dedicated left turn lane is what was recommended. And then at Witt Road Extended, the northern intersection on the development, which would be, oops, I got the wrong one up, let me pull up the other one. So again, at this four-way intersection, they suggested dedicated left turn lanes, and then a through lane, right lane, shared. At this northern intersection, it does suggest deceleration tapers and acceleration tapers, just allow people coming in and out of the neighborhood more time to be able to turn in and out without affecting through traffic on the road, which of course, at this point, there is no through traffic on this road, because they're driving to a cornfield. So, but they did recommend those improvements there. Then they suggested the entrance on two seventy-five, which will not have significant traffic added to it, most people are going to use Witt Road. They just mentioned keeping that as a standard one-lane in, one-lane out access there. So they did look at the overall traffic patterns in this area. As Kevin suggested, the volumes on the public road, the existing public roads, isn't going to get it to the level where we're going to need like a left turn lane, or something like that, or added lanes. It does have capacity, but they did make some specific recommendations for the intersections.
Any consideration for two fifty and Witt, the intersection there, are we still allowing through traffic on Witt?
I believe as part of Sunbrook, when it came through last year, I believe that we recommended that become a three-way stop.
Okay. I thought we had talked about that before.
I'm fairly certain of that.
Okay.
And that's all pretty common, when you look at traffic generation and traffic design, the intersections are really what you need to improve, especially as communities grow into their more rural, you know, county road cross-sections, if you will. The road has got enough width and lane width to carry a lot of traffic, it's at the intersections where you see bottlenecks. So widening out intersections, providing turn lanes, improved stop conditions, those will help those things function better, and can raise the level of service on the whole corridor just by improving intersections.
When you widen the lanes here to make these four-way stops, is that going to impede on any of these people's property? Who are you taking any into their property?
I don't believe so, no. If I recall correctly, this would all be on right-of-way that would be dedicated on their side.
They're actually cutting across here.
You can kind of see on the plan where it's shaded where the existing road comes through here, so it's making the swing here, coming to the east, so it's all on their property.
Anything else from the commissioners? All right, Ben, or are the applicant anything else to add?
No, thank you.
At this point, we will open this up for a, we will open up the public hearing, and I remind everyone that we would ask you to sign in, and if you intend to speak, we would ask, as you come up to speak, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then limits your comments to no more than three minutes each. And of course, if possible, if you can avoid repeating comments that we may have already heard, that will give us all more time to hear any additional new comments that your fellow citizens might have to share with us. So at this point, we have opened the public hearing, and anyone that would like to speak, please approach the microphone.
Good evening, council, everybody. My name's Dave Dean. My wife and I, we live at eleven ninety west, two seventy-five north, which adjoins, which adjoins the property to the west, directly butts up against the property. Obvious concerns are property value, drainage, traffic. I can speak to you about traffic for a minute. Most people should probably understand that there was a traffic accident at the railroad track last fall, early November, I believe. Most people don't know that that person was killed in that accident, and that's without additional traffic added to what we already have, in consideration that you're already adding two hundred and four homes to the south side of two fifty north. Also, July thirty, two thousand and ten, our son was killed at the intersection of one fifty and three hundred north, and that, too, was prior to the addition of this additional traffic that we're talking about. We talked about, the development basically gave the council a heads-up way ahead of time, before community members were ever notified that, you know, by a certified letter, that, hey, we're going to have a public forum on what's going on. So, you know, it doesn't really give a lot of preparation for most of the neighbors out here to prepare a lot. But we've garnered about fifty signatures over the last three or four days, with opposition to what's going on. My wife and I, we just did an extensive remodel to our home, and, you know, to say the least, we moved from Grant Street out to the country, just outside of town there, so we could get away from close proximity to neighbors. We like the large lots that we have out there, we like our neighbors that we have out there, but we like it in the setting that we have. We wouldn't necessarily be opposed to the fact that there might be people who want to build on what is single-family lots at this point in time, but in the two-acre lot range, you know, to see something nice out there and that. Also have concerns, no disrespect to Ryan Holmes or anything, but you talk about entry level for this, as you mentioned, I have a hard time believing that you put an eleven-hundred-square-foot home in the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar price range, plus homeowners' association, that I'd have a hard time wanting to go into something like, even though you call it maintenance-free. So, just for myself and my wife, just wanted to express that, you know, along with you having two hundred and four homes already going across there, the demographics of what's going in, where are these people coming from, what kind of jobs are they bringing to our city, you're also adding to the school system. Many of those would probably obviously go to the Harney School System. With two hundred and four plus one hundred and ten, and it's my understanding that if you're obviously going to extend the road clear through to three hundred north, you've probably got some mindset that you're going to probably try to add some more homes in the future to that. If not, I really see no need to extend that another eighth of a mile onto three hundred north, through the middle of a cornfield, so.
Mr. Dean, we're almost at four minutes, so.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and our condolences on the loss of your son.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Audrey Nordstrom. I live at nine oh one north, two fifty.
Can you scoot just a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pull it down, yeah. I live on two fifty. I am asking questions for several people in our area, so these aren't necessarily all my questions, and I'm not sure that I can expand on them. Try my best. I didn't hear what you said the size of the lot is going to be. And when you say that you are going to make the entryways into the subdivision, and that land will be taken from that development, I understand that part, but you must be going to widen two fifty somewhere along the line, too. And that's my question, is two fifty going to stay the same width? And if it is extended and widened, where is that width going to come from? Along, when you go down Anderson, you see the, there's a big fence on both sides where the one subdivision is, and the other side is quite open, and it's much more attractive than to see a large fence, it's kind of unsightly. You mentioned there's going to be an entrance off of two fifty, and we'd like to know where that entrance is, and also is that acceleration lane going to be taken from their property? Okay, I think that covers all the questions I have.
Thank you. We will, at the end of the public hearing, we will allow the staff, as well as the petitioner, to address some of those questions in more detail. We would appreciate that. Anybody else? Make the call one more time, is anybody else, this is your chance to speak. Sure.
I'm Pamela Diemico. I live at one oh four seven west, two seventy-five north. This will be right across the road from us, as we face north. My main concern is when you're talking about the area that's going to have two hundred and some homes, and then across from this is a hundred and some homes, you're talking three hundred homes, so we're looking at possibly three hundred to six hundred cars in addition. And right now, there is a traffic problem, mainly on two fifty, Witt Road as well. Witt Road has a bridge on it, that's basically, you can hardly get two cars through it. If you have a truck coming at you, you basically have to stop because of its wideness and the mirrors. Witt Road, Lafayette Avenue, how will they handle that? Because there possibly is going to need to be a stoplight or stop signs to get out onto Lafayette Avenue, if you're coming off of Witt Road. Two fifty north needs to be widened right now. You are trying to get away from hitting poles, or head-on with cars, or mailboxes. Two fifty north at the railroad is a problem. Apparently, they were supposed to get it fixed, but it hasn't been fixed yet. Two fifty north and thirty-nine north, as you come up to thirty-nine north from the west, there are no turn lanes getting you onto thirty-nine north. Whether you go left or right, there's no turn lanes. You come up, and with this added traffic of all these cars, it's going to be one lane of cars going all the way back. of cars going all the way back through several lights, having to get through. I'm concerned about the houses that they're putting in, and you can't say that they're all going to be empty nest homes. Some of these are going to have children in them, whether it's in their addition or the one across behind 250. And particularly with House Harney School going to handle all that overload, if they can even handle it now. Those are just my, some of my concerns at this moment. I'm sure I'll have more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? Just remind everyone, this is your, this is your chance. This is your public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, there will not be additional time for public comment.
May I speak again?
Sure.
Sorry, I just, there are two appointments I forgot to address. One thing is, there is a lot of traffic on 250 already from the, going to the hospital and Menards and back in that area, and more people will just be more people going to these places as well as living there. They're going to be shopping and using the hospital. The other thing was, sort of a side note, having been an elementary school teacher, just increasing the size of a school, like size of a classroom by just five students doesn't seem like much. But when you increase the classroom from 25 to 30 students, and you're grading papers at a night, and you have to grade English papers and math papers and spelling papers and social study papers, that's a lot of extra work for five extra kids. Doesn't seem like much, but you've got to think about that.
Anybody else? Not seeing anybody moving, so at this point, unless there's any objection from the commission, I will close the public hearing. At this point, public hearing is closed. Ben, do you, would you like to add comments at this point?
I guess I'll start and address what I can, let them address more specific to their project. And Kevin, feel free to chime in on the traffic side of it. We are aware of many of the issues they discussed, Whit Road and Lafayette. I know we've looked at that already, what the appropriate solutions might be. We're aware of the challenges at the railroad with 250 and at 250 and State Road 39. Those are things that we're already looking at. And as these neighborhoods develop over the next four to five years, we'll certainly have time to be able to figure out what the appropriate solutions are for those. Current traffic volumes, they are operating somewhat efficiently. I know there are challenges at times, but when you, I've talked about this a little bit before with the planning commission, when you look at the level of service that's been developed by NDOT, they have level of service from A to F. So level of service A is traffic's just moving, no stopping at all. Level of service F is when you're trying to get to downtown Chicago at the wrong time. We don't have anything that's a level of service F in Lebanon. But what NDOT with those ratings, they would basically say until it gets to level of service D, which everybody in here would be uncomfortable level of service D, they don't, they suggest that there's no improvements that are required until you get to level of service D. So there's a certain amount of wait time that's still acceptable before you have to make any improvements. But that being said, we are aware that there are going to need to be improvements at 39 and 250 and down at Whit Road and Lafayette Road. And as those, as these develop over the next three to five years, we'll be taking a look at it. In terms of the railroad, our hands are tied. CSX Railroad, they're totally 100% in control of what happens to that crossing. It's almost impossible for us even to get a hold of somebody, a live body, in order to discuss the issue with them, much less make something happen. So we can do everything we can with CSX to help them understand what's taking place in this area, need to start looking at it. But it's totally up to CSX in terms of when and how and the timing. And a lot of times, unfortunately, if CSX doesn't respond until it becomes an issue. But we definitely, we'll try to reach out to them, help them understand that at least at this time, there's going to be upwards of 200 additional homes put in this area over the next five years, and we need to work with CSX to try to get this addressed moving forward. Because it certainly will become, again, even one more accident out there is too many. So we need to figure out how to address that as quickly as possible. I know drainage was mentioned. I will bet all the money in my pocket that drainage will be better out here post-construction because they're designing this neighborhood with appropriate drainage to make sure that it's not affecting anybody in the area. In fact, it'll be better than what it is now because most farm fields don't operate very efficiently from a drainage perspective. This neighborhood has to meet all of the requirements of our drainage ordinance. They're going to require to detain that water and offload it into the county drainage system at an appropriate rate. So it should actually improve drainage in this area. Trying to think if there's anything else from the public side, planning perspective I should address. Kevin, do you want to add anything on the traffic side?
No, I think you covered all. Ben's right, we've been looking at all these things. We've had conversations with the state regarding the intersection with 39 and the need for additional lanes there. At this point, they do not see that as a need at this point, that they're willing to address. Ben's right, we've been working with the railroads, we're aware of the fatality that happened last year. The railroad company was actually planning to do crossing improvements last year, and I guess got a bit sideways with the county. 250 North and most of Whit Road is county right-of-way, and the county would not let them execute that project. So we're hoping to get them back at some point. We have also discussed the crossing with the state. NDOT also governs rail traffic in the state of Indiana in addition to state and federal highway systems. Unfortunately, the amount of trains on that section of track does not qualify us for some of the NDOT available funds for upgrading that crossing. And on that note, we are also working with the county to enter into an interlocal agreement where the city can take over maintenance of 250 North and Whit Road so that we can look at resurfacing, we can look at widening. The difficulty we have now is the bulk of that right-of-way is just not under our control. But obviously, as we're approving these projects, and these projects are being annexed into the city, this is something we want to look at. So I think that probably covers everything you've mentioned. As I said earlier, we are planning to resurface a large portion of Whit Road. We are looking at a bridge project on Whit Road to improve that. The intersection of Lafayette Avenue will eventually get better because there will no longer be traffic coming from the interstate at that point. The NDOT is going to close down that left exit. I think that covers everything. And one other comment I would make, I heard a couple people mention schools. Our school population is actually decreasing in Lebanon proper. If it weren't for the growth in Whitestown and half of Whitestown coming to Lebanon through Perry Worth Elementary, the Lebanon school population would actually be, it's relatively stable at this point, but the local Lebanon proper school population is actually decreasing right now. So that's a problem and an issue for the school board and for the school to try to figure out. But we have heard that repeatedly in reports from Dr. Taylor, that that population is actually going down at this time.
And just to add to that, you know, I believe he's quoted as saying that they have capacity for an additional, like 1,200 students across the school system. So they're actually below capacity of the existing facilities in the system. So that's obviously split amongst all the school buildings, but they do have capacity across the school system for a number of additional students.
I'll say on the traffic as well. I have 100% faith and trust in Kevin and Ben and your department, the planning department, that you guys are being forward thinkers and thinking about how this could impact those different intersections and changes. And I know you guys have been talking about that for a long time. My concern is, I don't want us to see those F and D ratings before we react. I'd like as a community, I'd like us to try to be proactive as best we can, knowing that we are going to eventually hit those D and F ratings, and do what we can as we can. And like I said, trying to be proactive as a community, that would be my hope and goal. And I think hopefully your group feels the same way.
We are, and just to, not to get into a traffic discussion, but that is one of the things that we are proposing to council right now, is to develop a traffic impact study and a traffic impact ordinance that will provide us with a lot more resources and teeth to our development ordinances as development comes in, that we can look at traffic impacts and collect fees associated with the impacts that new development will require. So we are very much trying to be proactive and get ahead of that issue.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will let you know from my side that your staff does an awesome job. I know Adam mentioned it before, but they've been very, very much the ultimate professionals in the entire process between Sunbrook and Sunbrook Villas, so hats off to them. They've done a wonderful job from our perspective, and I think they represent the city very well in making sure that people like ourselves or other builders are doing what they need to do to put their piece in to help out. And that's, that's part of this, is that between the two developments in this area, there's going to be $60 million of tax value at least, in my guess, just a quick estimate. Those tax dollars will help fund improvements and be able to help the city from a budget perspective and carry so. A lot of times, development helps spur successes and changes in redevelopment in the community. So we feel that you're going to see some of that from us being able to be there at this site. Just to address a couple of the comments, I cut one off. So one of the comments that Ms. Nordstrom had was the entrance, so we have an entrance, if there's a little bit of confusion, we're going to have our entrance not on 250 but on 275. I think Ben might have mentioned 250, but the entrance is actually on 275 and not on 250. So there won't be any widening and necessary right-of-way purchases along 250. The, one of the other items was drainage, and as Ben mentioned, it's our responsibility to make sure that the drainage is better than where it is today. With the drainage ordinance and stormwater provisions that are in place, we have to hold our water, manage it through our own system, and release it at a much lesser rate than what is released today. So as you have with all of your developments that happen in the city, we will be taking care of a lot of those problems that are out there. We have met several times with the county surveyor to discuss, there are two legal drains in the area, so we will be picking up those legal drains and running them through our system and enhancing those as we do it. We had talked about average value of the homes, so those values of the homes, they aren't all going to be 250. There will be a range of value. So we just are projecting where we think, over the time of 100 lots or so that are sold, roughly about a $250,000 average value. Certainly, the smaller lots, or sorry, smaller homes will be smaller values, larger homes will be larger values. And I think, oh, lot size, yes. So the lot size is roughly going to be a 50 by 120 type of lot size, which is just under a quarter of an acre. But again, as Ben has mentioned in his presentation, this type of client isn't looking for a yard, they're looking for green space and amenity and lifestyle. They're not looking to have a big yard to go with that. I think that was, yeah. Yeah, I think that was all I had, so if there's any other questions, I can answer those, or Adam can answer.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from the commission? There's, Ben, anything else from you, from staff?
I don't know if I have anything specific to add. I was just going to reiterate what I said at the beginning. If there's anything designed, remember, we're looking at both the PUD ordinance tonight and the preliminary plan. So if there's anything design-specific that you had questions about, whether it's, you know, I'd really prefer to see more landscaping in this area, or something like that, this is the opportunity also for the planning commission to be able to provide some comment related to the actual design of the plan itself, if there's something specific you would like to see. So just want to make sure, we're asking a lot of general questions development-wide, but if there's anything specific about the design that you have questions about, please also make sure to ask those at this time.
The only question I have are the signs at the entrances. What kind of signs, are they going to be the monument signs or what?
Yeah, they've actually provided some concepts. I'll pull those up here on the screen. They're looking at just doing a fairly straightforward column as opposed to a massive monument sign. We'll see if we can get this thing to pull up. It looks like it's... Well, the computer may have just decided to stop working for me. It's not going to pull up the document. Do you have, you have a hard copy? Wait, I might have a hard copy of it.
I don't have a hard copy, I just, I've got it on my iPad.
I think it's opening, Ben.
Is it coming finally? Here we go. If this doesn't work, I've got a hard copy of it, too, I can pull up.
It's coming up.
Let's go ahead and go to the overhead here, we'll do that instead. This is not necessarily the exact signage you're going to use, but this is just representative of some sort of column that would have either an inlay or some sort of sign off to the side of it that they'd be doing at the entrances to this neighborhood. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what they're thinking there.
With us, since we have four entrances into this subdivision, we didn't want to do, like, one main one and then have those other three maybe not have the same effect. So we'll use a column with maybe signs on two, monumentation on two sides of that sign, so you could see it going both directions if necessary. And we'll probably end up having one, one column at each entry. It'll be substantial in nature, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of four feet in width. It won't be just a little small column, it'll be something of substance there with either a limestone or some sort of plaque type of logo on the front of it.
Ben is the top, is the top sign that you had up there, is that acceptable?
Yes, yeah, it would be, as long as it meets all the, we would make sure it meets all the setbacks, et cetera. But yeah, it would be acceptable.
Are we counting the north side as the fourth entrance? I think it's been referred to as four entrances before. Now, we've got 275 and then the two there on Whit.
Yeah, I'm probably calling the one that goes east into the neighborhood from the intersection, one of the entrances. And this computer is totally not liking me right now. See if I can get anything to come back up. So yeah, you've got, here's the far north here, these entrances that line up here. And then you've got a third entrance that's over here off of 275 that you see right at the edge of the screen here. And then I'm calling this one the fourth entrance right here, that's one leg of the four-way stop. And I was incorrect, I mentioned 250, there is not an entrance off 250.
I was looking at it as one big neighborhood, but it's actually two, it's split down the middle by a public road.
Yeah, yeah, this is a little bit unique because you have a main thoroughfare right in the middle of it, otherwise that would be an internal road.
Got it.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, we would be looking for a motion. We will need to take these motions, both DACA items separately. Procedurally, we need to act on DACA number 19-2, which is the request for PUD rezoning and forwarding of that rezoning recommendation to city council. And pending that action there, 19-3 is the
pending that action there, uh, 19-3 is the actual planned unit development preliminary plan, uh, approval. So obviously, we have to do the first one, first things first, and that would be the PUD rezone petition at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we forward 19-2, uh, the Plan Unit Development Rezone Ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Hey, Kelly, will you take the roll?
Matt Reynolds?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock? John Lasley?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Jane Taylor?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, uh, moving on to docket number 19-3, which is the, uh, preliminary plan approval. Um, looking for a motion on that item.
I just want to make note of the conditions that were attached to the preliminary plan. Make sure any motion would include those.
Thank you very much. Um, why don't we, um, just review those really quick here?
Was it the four?
Yes, so, um, there are four items that are, um, part of the recommendation, and that would include, uh, tac comments that the applicant adequately addressed, city of Lebanon tac comments prior to submission of a secondary plat or improvement location permit. Uh, stormwater approval, uh, the applicant receives formal drainage approval from the city of Lebanon Board of Public Works prior to submission of a secondary plat or improvement location permit. Number three, the applicant amend the street cross-sections in the sec, in the preliminary plat documents to reflect five-foot sidewalks where currently indicated as four feet. And number four, that the PUD rezone and ordinance is adopted by a city common council. If any changes are recommended by the council, then the preliminary plan shall be amended to reflect these changes and returned to the planning commission for review and approval. If the PUD rezone, but that's not really applicable anymore. We've just approved the PUD rezone, the last statement there. But, uh, those are the four recommendations, uh, from staff. I miss anything else, Ben?
A motion that we approve, docket 19-2, uh, the unified development ordinance.
That would be, be three.
Oh, 19-3, I'm sorry. I wrote down two. Um, contingent on the four items that Kevin just detailed, hopefully I don't have to repeat.
You're fine.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Lori Gross has offered the second. Any discussion or comment? Why don't we take the roll?
Matt Reynolds?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock? John Lasley?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Jane Taylor?
Lori Gross? Yes.
Thank you. With that, both docket numbers 19, uh, dash two and two, three have, have passed. Uh, I have no further items of new business to, uh, to bring before you. Ben, do you have anything?
I just want to add for those in the audience, the PUD rezone will be at the council meeting next Monday evening for the, the, the first reading of the ordinance.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Apologize. Tuesday. We will not be here Monday. Yes, so Tu- Tuesday evening is, uh, at 7:15. The PUD rezone ordinance, uh, will be in front of the council.
Thank you very much. Yep. We appreciate everyone who's came here tonight to participate in that, this process. We, we don't often have this much participation, so this is a, a welcome addition to have this kind of participation and discussion before us. So we thank you all for being here. Uh, with that, I'm looking for one other motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.